Good evening, I'd like to call the board, the regular board meeting for May 8th, 2017. Roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
President.
Mr. Rodman.
Here.
This is Matthew.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Rodman.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
Thank you. Joining us for the pledge of allegiance tonight is Ms. Emily Kearns. She's a fifth grade student at Athens CLC. She loves doing math and science, that is her strength in school, and she is in a gifted math program. She was also in student council last year. Outside of school, Emily participates in Girls on the Run, does gymnastics, and plays softball. Thank you for joining us tonight, and if everyone could please stand, Emily's going to lead us on the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait right there. You're gonna... Oh. Can you guess from my name?
If you could stand by the flag, that would be enough, but whatever works for you.
Hold on. Perfect. Look this way. Hang on one second. One more. And would you like to tell us your name?
Scott.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we're gonna open it up to community and school reflection, and anyone who'd like to pick that up?
We can just begin. We're grateful to have the opportunity to attend the last of the Athens County Foundation hometown meeting, which was right here, Ellis, and then the PTA meeting to discuss some issues over at Firestone, and then the Children's Service for Community Correctness, honoring those persons, particularly those in Athens Police Force Detective Duvall Award, as well as honoring other persons in the community, and one was our state house representative, Amelia Sykes, and her husband, her father accepted the award for her petition, was not available, was Dr. Sykes. And I attended a workshop and then luncheon conducted by Dr. Janet Taylor dealing with trauma, Find Your Gold in Childhood Trauma, Perspectives on Trauma-Informed Understanding and Period, which was a very good workshop, and we're all in some sort of trauma, everybody goes through some sort of trauma, and it's how we respond to that trauma, how we look at individuals going through that trauma. And then the noon hour, she talked about sick and tired being sick and tired, which was a saying that Fannie Hammer in Mississippi used when she was going through her difficulty with the Democratic Convention, and how you can make it through that storm, even though it was a very difficult time, of making it through the storm. And of course, this was sponsored by Alphamy, and they participated in the morning session and the session during the lunch hour. And again, our principals, staff, superintendent, board members, our children go through trauma, and how they respond when that trauma enters into their life, and we need to be sensitive to their traumatic experiences that they're having, so that we can respond in an appropriate way. And sometimes we don't respond in an appropriate way, because we don't understand what they're going through. So those sessions were very, very good, and then last evening, got to share with Debbie Rock at a dinner sponsored by GASS. And GASS is guardian advocating child safety and protection, and this was their spring activity, they have an activity in the fall, also a very worthwhile organization that many of our children, as well as parents, participate in. It was a young lady who spoke about her experiences with her own children, and it was part of the school, someone in the school that helped them, and helped her child to be able to go through some of the difficulties, again, trauma, what our children are going through, when they're acting out, when they're expressing themselves, it could be because something has happened in their life. And once we find out what has happened, how do we respond, how do we intervene in a positive way, so that they can be able to make it through their activities in life and school? So they deal with sexual offenses, abuse, abduction, they do fingerprinting, they take a recording of children, a little snapshot of who they are, they give that to the parent, so if something happens to the child, the parent would have all that information, a recording, a visual information, and their fingerprinting. So it's a very worthwhile organization, and we're grateful that Akron Public Schools is involved with that and allows us to participate in those activities.
I'll just piggyback on that with having been to the event. The other thing I picked up at it that I thought was a great, they have a bookmark, which is tips for staying safe online, and honestly, with all the things going on today, these are just so important. One, never give any personal information to anyone you meet online. Two, never meet up with anyone you don't already know. Three, you don't have to answer messages from people you don't know. Four, there's no such thing as private on the internet. Five, don't post pictures of yourself you wouldn't want your parents, teachers, or college advisor to see. Six, don't send pictures of other people. Seven, don't download content without your parents' permission. And eight, never share your password with anyone but your parents. So they're just excellent advice for students, and I'm gonna see what we can do to have more of these available, because it's just a great device. So that was the end of my week, but also some other things, and this one I didn't go through, but I saw it in the paper yesterday, and it fell from right here. I just wanna congratulate Ellis Amcharshman for the 2017 Clun Caribou Coach of the Year. So it was an excellent honor, and when I was reading the whole thing, Ellis had four of the winners over the course, and I think he's only been since the mid-'90s maybe, so excellent turnaround, and so congratulations to Coach Amcharshman. And I love the picture of him and the softball team on the front page, or on the front page of the Forbes Act itself. In addition to those, I also attended the Garfield Navy Junior ROTC, I guess it'll be the closing ceremony, the end of the year recognition, and that also ties it out, because that's the group that will be moving to Ellis next year with the closing of Garfield, so they'll be here. On Saturday, I attended the Christ Child Society Diamond Gala, which was the 60th anniversary, and that's a group that just does an awful lot of things, especially with Project Rise and various things, they really help our students, and it was an honor to be there and see all the wonderful work that they've done, reviews, and things they've done to support our students, so that was lovely. And then Saturday night, I was at the 60th anniversary pro-wobble, which is my thesis, but in that, a lot of talk, and they also had Marilyn Keats here, but there's a lot of concern over baseball fields, because that over at Perkins is one gear that they use, and they were very, very concerned about that, so I got a gear full that night on that, but have a great week.
Just a couple of my highlights anyways, give a lot of different things, but I think the highlight, maybe for Akron Public Schools, I guess I don't want to speak for everybody, but what's in United Way, and the bold goals that they came out with, two of those bold goals revolved around Akron Public Schools' graduation rate, one of them, and being third grade, reading level by third grade, so that has to do with early childhood learning, but United Way's changing a little bit in the way that they operate over how they've operated in the past, they used to be just a fundraising mechanism, and now they're actually going to steer money to things, they deem important for the city of Akron and Southern County. And like I said, the Akron Public Schools was two of those four bold goals, so I wanna say thank you, United Way, for, you know, I guess, thank you in advance, we haven't done anything that with them, well, I shouldn't say that, we've already done things with them, but as far as the bold goals, record, you know, working with them, and improving our graduation rate and third grade readiness as kids get into third grade. On the very same day, I was honored to be at the Optimist Club for their annual scholarships. They award a couple larger scholarships to students who are moving on to the University of Akron. As an Akron alumni, I like seeing that, people going to my alma mater, so they picked, they actually honored students out of every high school in Akron, including parochial schools. Very wonderful program that they put on every year, and hope it continues. And I'll just end with, I had the opportunity to be here last, was that last week, LeBron James had his family picnic here, and I guess it's grown so much here that they have moved from the cafeteria, they moved to the gymnasium this year, my understanding, not here, but at the previous picnic, somewhere in Akron, they ran out of food, so they had to go to expand, and what they bring with them, so, but we're always grateful for what LeBron James Foundation Foundation and Mr. James brings to Akron Public Schools.
So many things have already been mentioned, I won't re-mention those, but I wanted to give a few shout-outs for other things. Akron Urban League had a scholarship luncheon, one of the things that I tried to encourage the Akron Urban League to do is perhaps mention which schools those scholarships are coming from, there were at least 20 that came out of Forte High School, and I know there were several other of our schools represented, it would be lovely when they're giving all these great scholarships, or announcing all these great scholarships, and what people have done, and people realize that they came from Akron Public Schools, it's always nice to have that acknowledgement. Along those same lines, the Akron Area Council's PTAs gave out their scholarships, and all of the schools were well-represented, or many of the schools were well-represented, it was great to hear an inspirational speech from one of our students as well, and that's always great. I know that kind of is the kickoff to our real graduation season, where we're gonna see those same fantastic kids, they get to shake their hands a lot of times, because they do so many great things. Wanted to say, I did not get to come, but I saw fantastic reviews for the Cinderella that was done here at Ellis, had a lot of friends that came who said it was amazing, so kudos to those who were involved in that. I did get to attend the Miller South Color Run, and I know Windermere had one this weekend. Bless your hearts, you couldn't have had worse weather the last two Saturdays, if you'd have tried, you'd think Saturdays in May, they'd be perfect for a color run, it was great for running color, because they were streaking out everything's faces, I saw some great pictures on Facebook of Windermere's this week, and of Miller South's last week. That's a lot of fun, until you get a big breath of that in, it's not very exciting, but, let's see. Last but not least, yesterday, at Fairland Lutheran, they held their annual, part of their music series that they hold, and they honored four area high schools, Revere, Copley Medina, and Firestone, for their choir performances, and all four choirs got to perform individually, and then with all four of them together, it's wonderful, it's always a great thing, and along those lines, I would encourage board members to please check your schedules for May Festival. It's the 90th, I believe, anniversary of that event, as a past participant myself, I think it's one of the best things that we do to highlight ours, especially our elementary school level, so encouraging them to check that out.
Okay, I'm gonna give this a little bit, it'll take me about 20 minutes, but it's okay. I just wanna reiterate some things that we said also before, one about Dr. Janet Taylor, who was very good, I was fortunate to have an opportunity to speak to her directly, and to talk to her, and she had a lot of insight, a lot of reference to trauma and mental health, and I would encourage our administration to find out how we can get some type of training for our teachers, counselors, and administrators dealing with trauma and mental health, because there are a lot of people, as Reverend Walker stated, that have a lot of issues, and all of us have gone through some type of trauma, but it is not treated and not called at a specific time, then it can cause more problems for a kid as they grow older, and a lot of times, these are some of the kids that we have, that we think are trouble kids in our classrooms, but there may be just something going on that we need to tap aside and help them, so I was glad to see that, and I encourage our administration to get that type of training for our staff. I also had the opportunity to sit in a circle, and if anyone has had an opportunity to sit in a circle with Alphamy Incorporated, with Dr. Kwame Spruance, it's very interesting, I know there are some of our schools that are doing some work, but it's very, very interesting, it's a process where the kids, they learn, they develop, and they also have the opportunity to get things off of their backs, so they get a chance to talk, so it's more of a, I call it therapeutic, but it deals with the whole person, so I wanna thank Dr. Kwame Spruance for bringing Dr. Taylor, as well as our own Carlos Sibley, who is on that board, who's done a great job with him. I've also had the opportunity to, this is somewhat on the same note of this mental health, that I had the opportunity to attend the training with Child, Children's Services, and Juvenile Court, and it was also dealing with trauma and mental health with our students, and trying to help us as staff who work with these kids to understand a little bit more about trauma, about mental health, and also how trauma and mental health along with, if some of these kids are self-medicating with droons, it's very sad, but these are some of the kids too that we see in our schools, and again, that's something that has gone undiagnosed, and maybe kids have not gotten help, and so that was very interesting, very good, so I was glad to be a part of that, and again, that's dealing with mental health and trauma. And then also, I wanna thank Christ Child, Christ Child does a lot for a lot of Akron Public Schools, and the students, they provide a lot, I've been a follower of them probably for about five years now, and along with Mr. James, we attend the event probably every year that they ask us to come and help with their fundraisers, but they do a lot, and I wanna take time out to thank them for what they have done, and also, I wanna thank Ellis Cluster, I mean, the displays that you had out there, the kids, we're talking about how they explained what was going on, and what was happening in the different schools, I wanna thank you guys, but it was very, very good, and I wanna thank those kids, those kids are very nice kids, very intelligent kids, and we wanna continue to see them grow as they can to, and adults, so thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone else?
Here and now, I just have a couple of quick things, and I won't go through all the events, I think everybody mentioned anything that I was at as well. I wanna say thanks to the community members, to the staff members, to everyone that came out tonight, and in particular, our students, our All-Stars, and Emily for giving the pledge, and representing this cluster very well tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to bring some of our board meetings out into the community, to not only make it maybe easier for some folks in the community to come hear what we're discussing, but also to engage the community and hear what's on their mind as well. And, you know, it may be a small crowd tonight, but I think we all believe that providing every opportunity for people to engage with the board is extremely important, and so we don't, we didn't want this year just to keep everything down top, we really wanted to get out into the community and offer an opportunity to engage, so that's why we're here tonight, I hope that's why you're here tonight. Most of us will stick around after the meeting, please feel free to talk to us, to engage us, if you don't get a chance tonight, please email us or phone call, or give us a phone call if you have questions, or concerns, or comments on something you heard here tonight, or anything else that might be on your mind. And again, to the students, and to those fifth grade student council members, the representation so well tonight at the tables, thank you for being here, thank you for giving us a little idea of what you have going on at your schools, we really appreciate it. To that end, at the end of the meeting, something that we don't normally do, but that we are, as a normal course of business, but that we are doing tonight, and all of our board meetings, is giving the public the opportunity to come up and ask questions while they're here. So at the very end of the meeting, we will offer an opportunity for you to line up with a microphone if you have questions, or comments, or concerns. The only thing we do ask is if you have any specific concerns about a particular staff member, or about a particular student, or anything like that, that you let me know in advance, because we will go into executive session for that, we don't discuss employee or personnel matters, or students, hopefully. So if you have those, please let me know in advance, there will be a moment for you to be able to do that, I'm sure. And we do ask to keep it to two or three minutes, let everybody get through, if you have another question, you're more than welcome to file back through until you get your questions answered. Just a reminder, this is graduation season, it's obviously one of our favorite times of the year, because we get to see the culmination of all of the great work of our students and our teachers, in particular, our teacher's given class, week was Teacher Appreciation Week, I hope you know that we appreciate you all. But this is the season for our students to show off what they've learned, and what they've achieved, and so we're really excited about that. Board members, you should have received all of our finalized schedule for graduation assignments, I would encourage you, please, to make sure that if there are any issues with your graduation assignment, that you let us know as soon as possible, our schools are responding, I want us to be there, so we wanna make sure that we are there. Also, you should have received an email about our board retreat that we'll be doing in June, so if you have any comments, you would like us, would like to forward me any information on things that you would like us to consider for the agenda, please do that as soon as possible, as you want. All right, moving on. Communications and recognitions, we have the recognition of the bus rodeo board members, Mr. Bill Anderson.
Good evening, board members and the community, on behalf of the Akron Public Schools Transportation Department, Bill and I want to give you an update on something that was really cool, and that we attended on April 22nd. As you are aware, we have various skilled bus riders that take your students back and forth to school on a daily basis. To earn these skills and learn how to do this, these people go through a lot of training, but they also are required to be recertified every six years to keep their license up to date. And one of those ways to do that, and to prove their skills, is to participate in the bus rodeo. This is an international competition, and we start here in Akron, Ohio, in the local level, and I'm happy to say that we've done this for a number of years, in fact, Ellis itself hosted two of these rodeos a couple years ago, so this is a very big event. And Mr. Anderson and I are very proud to say this year, we had 11 of our volunteer bus riders, this is a volunteer program, they don't have to do this, go through the bus rodeo, and I'm very proud to present to you the people that won, and we had six of our 11 people actually place a score in the top 20, and I'm going to turn this over to Bill a little bit, so he can explain each of the awards, and we have representatives for each one.
During the competition, they do a number of things, the rhythm test, and also there's multiple, multiple driving skills, rail crossing, backup, draw and off pickup, which is two. At one time, we had over 18 buses out in the forest, 10 of them were supplied by Akron Public Schools, and thank you to the board, and the rodeo committee was very appreciative of that, that we had 10 of our buses, transit buses, out there, and they ran flawlessly, so that was a great thing for mechanics and everything, and all of our drivers here drove out there, they started at 5:30 in the morning to head out to Austintown, and the other 10 buses were supplied by another school, and those were conventionals. So on that day, like Deborah said, we had 11 participants in the rodeo, we had two of our drivers that were judges there also, so we had a total of 13 people out there at the rodeo. And the first prize of recognition is spirit wear. They took first place on the shirt that was signed by one of our own bus drivers, so they just put a plaque for that. The next one was... As Deborah said, we had six out of our 20, there's 711 bus drivers finished in the top 20. The next award was first place for the team, it was, multiple teams participate in different schools, and our school had like two teams, those who made it three or four teams, but they used the scores to combine, and we were fortunate that we had one team, our team, was number one, and that team consisted of Lisa LaMaster, Debbie Papp, Chris Pastor, and Larry Walker.
So that was, that was one of the first places, or that was the first place we thought was the team, we also, we also had Rookie of the Year, and that is Chris Pastor, and Chris, you've either shown the plaque that we're allowed to keep for one year, we have to give it back unless another team member next year wins it, and, good job. On that plaque, there's 24 employee codes of nameplates, and I'm happy to say, there's seven of them that are on there from Akron, out of the 24, so we've got 30% of the nameplates are on that plaque. And as it bottomed down, we got to, Chris Pastor also took eighth place, although he was an alternate state, and which was competed this past weekend, and Chris was there in case one of the top six did not participate, but then he also judged in the state rodeo, which was this past weekend in Columbus, so he took that, and then Larry Walker, right here, he took fourth, fourth in the region, and... And this was the second rodeo that he participated, so taking fourth is very good, and he did compete this past weekend at the state, state level, competing against all the other regions, and did okay, but he'll do better next year when he's first out at state, so.
You can see Larry tonight, he takes the bus out, in the yard, and practices.
We had a lot of practice at Akron, a lot of orange barrels, we had a lot of good practice in Akron, so, I'll work on it. But like Deborah did say, just all, they're putting up here, competing on their own time, they trained on their own time, and took Saturday, and Larry's base, he took two Saturdays out of their time to participate in the rodeo, and Team Asher, as I call everybody, is included, has did a very good job, represented Akron very well.
We're not only proud of them, they are extending invitation...
He did a lot of good practice in Akron, Gary, so I'll work on it. But like Deborah did say, they're putting up here, competing on their own time, they trained on their own time, and took Saturday, and Larry's base, he took two Saturdays out of their time to participate in the rodeo. Team Asher, as I called everybody included, has did a very good job, represented Akron very well.
We're not only proud of them, they are extending an invitation to you for next year, so, no, not proud, but to be honest with you, they would like to extend an invitation. We will notify you of the next year's regional, and if you're available, you can come and sit with me and Bill and cheer them on, but they did a great job. Thank you very much, Ron.
I wanted to also take this time to say thank you to Bill Andexner. Bill has been a, come in and done a great job with Akron Public Schools, changed the things with the busing system, and he has done a very good job, so I think we need to take time off to thank him for all the good work he's done.
Thank you very much. It's really good to see people from Akron representing Akron well, and I think you guys did amazing this year. Congratulations. Recognition and presentation, Destination Imagination vanished from the Betty Jane CLC students.
Board of Education, thank you very much for inviting us here. We're from Betty Jane, and we have seven students who've competed this year in Destination Imagination, which is a worldwide organization that encourages imagination and creativity on their part. I'm a coach, we're a manager, but I'm not allowed to do anything for them, except saying good job, all right? Tabitha is one of our fifth graders that competed this year, and she has a little thing that she would like to tell you about Destination Imagination before they perform.
Destination Imagination is a competition where we have to, it's like we have to perform something. There's lots of categories, you could do science, engineering, improv. We chose the fine arts, which we had to do, we had to make a story that had a colorful character, and we had to have a color disappear and show what it would be like if that color wasn't in the world. So we had to make up our own, we had to make up our own script, our own storyline, we had to get our own costumes and make all of our scenery, and you have to have two team choice elements, which it shows off your talents and what you like. So we picked art and comedy, and that over there is like, that's part of our art, it's our Cabana, and we have mosaics on it, and we chose mosaics for art, because we were learning about it in class, and we wanted to show mosaics, so we, after regionals, because we won, and we went to state, and after that, we just cut up our art and made it into mosaics. So we went to state, but we didn't win state, but, and we're timed, so we have eight minutes to set up our stuff, our scenery, and then we have, and then we have to perform it in that time as well. There's, and Tabitha Walther from, I mean, fifth grade.
I'm Reese Tucker, and I'm in third grade.
I'm Liz Alaski, and I'm in third grade.
I'm Harper Stevens, Stevens, and I'm in third grade.
I'm Heidi Andrews, and I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Audrey Walton, and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Jasmine Burton, and I'm in fourth grade.
I hope you enjoy our skit called "The Beach of Blue."
Sparkling Seven, are you ready?
Yes, we are ready.
They're going to perform right now, here, because I can't see if you want to...
What a beautiful blue day to be.
My favorite color is here, blue.
Yay, it's so beautiful here.
Blue, I'm tired.
How can you like green?
How? No, it's so ugly.
She's in the way.
Well, maybe she was tired. Why do you care?
Sorry.
Hey Vanessa, it's my girl, I was sleeping. Do you know her name?
Um, Pretty Shirt Crystal.
Yeah, yeah, that's her name. She loves blue way too much.
Blue?
This guy's, the ocean, my shirt's blue.
And I haven't known you in two.
Hey, don't be rude to these nice girls.
Ah, it's the terrible Tara.
But they, but what?
But they, but, Tara, Crystal's a... Teach her, Crystal. So you don't have to be that mean.
Thanks, Crystal, you're not for me.
Whatever.
Ha ha, very funny girls, remember that.
I need to talk to you girls. And no questions, why do you need to talk to us? I said no questions. Anyway, I'm gonna spend lots of chairs, and you should seem perfect for it. What's in it for us?
Yeah.
I'll give you a hundred bucks each, but no more questions. What's the experiment? Stop asking questions. I have a machine, but I use it all the time. That's a machine? But it's so small.
And so heavy.
It's metal, of course it's, it's heavy. This machine will take away blue.
Oh, so there will be no more blue for that silly girl to love? Okay, well, wait, what about the sky?
What about purple?
Blue, and maybe it's purple, that's my favorite color.
I don't care about your precious color. You don't even care about the effects of getting rid of blue? Blue's a calming color. People get angry all the time.
I don't care, it'll do calm.
Oh, the stupid machine will start.
Tara, this isn't a good idea, it could cause something bad to happen in nature.
The plants won't be able to make food, because our leaves are green.
Blue and yellow are green.
The bugs eat the plants.
The birds eat the bugs.
The cats eat the birds. The whole food chain will be affected. Ha ha ha, here it goes. You guys smell pipe in there? That's where the blue is now. Tara, obviously, can't really split it here, first up next.
Help me run it up. Oh, it's looking much lighter now, and I'm having a stupid pipe.
What was that noise? Look at the sky, is it sunset? And the ocean, and my shirt, I have to be dreaming, it's all orange. Extra, extra, we all got it, thanks.
Blue disappears from the world, oh my goodness, you can't, you're gone, just can't. What are the colors they're like besides blue?
Anyone willing to find out, I know that this...
Could have been an actual cause.
Correct, but wait, what actual causes could have caused this?
Well, I don't know what happened back in school, I can't guess.
Need some help investigating? I can do.
I could use some help. Maybe we should ask them if they know what happened to blue. Do you know what happened to blue?
Well, no, I would not like to know what happened. Well, I did see Tara with Vanessa and Veronica. I saw them with the machine, but I don't know what it does. Did you see where Tara, Vanessa, and Veronica lived with the machine?
I heard what they're mostly been telling.
Maybe it was Savannah, or did they say Montana? Or was it Fannana? Or did they say Guyana? No, they said Cabana, but I don't know where Cabana is.
Thanks for your time.
Welcome, good luck. Where are you two going?
We're just enjoying the lovely orange day. You can't walk on the beach?
What is this?
I have no idea what that's doing.
Tara's crazy machine that took away the... What is she doing to this? Tara's a friend of mine. You don't talk to her anymore. I can't believe she would do this.
Tara's still an eagle. She just wants to be cool. She invented a machine that took the blue out of the world, so there would be no more blue for silly girls like you.
Now bring back blue.
She can't. The machine is destroyed. Well, if you want to know how to bring back blue so much, go find Tara. She might be in Cabana. I mean, she said that. Well, why did you tell her? Because now we're not the ones paying our hundred dollars each.
You actually believe her? She's an eagle. Do you think she would do that for anyone?
Well, I asked for it, yes, and she said she would give it to me, but then she ran away and said she'd have one to go to. She said she'd give it to me later.
Some of that people would never change things.
Well, she wouldn't give it to you, she'd give it to me. I did so much more than you. And I hate green.
And I hate her.
We want some good girl, we don't.
Here's something I can do. How are you fighting? Veronica did it, she told you, I think I can trust her.
Yes, she did tell me. She told me that you made a machine, so it would be normal for silly girls, for girls like me to love.
Now bring back blue. Not just you, the animals and the plants will be affected.
I can't bring back blue, the machine is destroyed. What are the colors they're like besides blue?
Orange.
I guess I could.
Orange is the lightest of blue, they are complementary colors, or at least they were.
Orange is my favorite anyway.
Bringing you, everyone's fighting at the beach. Where is blue, it makes you calm. If not, I'm fighting, and I'm the tightest person on earth.
You are not the tightest person, or I am.
Crystal, Chris, don't let go, let's go play beach ball.
Oh, cool. I just have the craziest dream ever, it was how blue is this here from the road, it was a place by orange.
Well, that's Tara, right? Come on, let's go.
And you guys were really neat to me. Now, that's a really good song. We're best friends, we would never do that.
I know, right? Now let's go play some beach ball. Finally, it's about time.
And we just say thank you so much again for sharing that with us. We loved it. Terrible Tara, I'm afraid of your laugh. That was absolutely fantastic, and I'm so glad that you guys were here to share that with us today. Thank you so much. All right, and while our all-star students from Betty Jane are cleaning up, we are going to turn to the ELLIS update presentation with Michelle Cullen.
Well, they are a hard act to follow. I should have had them be part of my PowerPoint, that would have been better, but I love orange and blue, so I think they're my colors. So, we're just going to give you a little update of where we are this school year, and I'm sorry that you will have to turn and see the PowerPoint. Logistically wise, you don't have the best setup. Joe? Thank you. So, here is ELLIS from the street with my iPhone, and that is what we look like right now, and what we will look like for a couple more years. Current front of the building and the current main lobby, we hit it again, I'll just fade it in. So there we are, that's what we look like right now, and then we hit it again. And that is inside the main lobby. So now the very next picture is what's happening outside, at the back, and of course, that's a panoramic picture, it's very difficult to get zoomed in, but it's amazing to see what's going on so far, and how quickly that we're putting something up. So I know Mr. James wanted to add something to your construction.
Right, yeah, just on the construction part, I know the foundations on, I think we're calling it Area A, which is a southeastern part of the building, which includes the auditorium, the gyms, and locker rooms, cafeteria, and the career construction, auto, and small animal labs. Those foundations are being worked on, along with the foundation walls, which are up to the finished floor, and the auditorium, the gyms, and the locker rooms, and you see the bearing walls that are out there. All the underground plumbing and electrical services are underway, and we hope this summer we'll have the roof joists for the gym and the auditorium installed, and then temporary enclosure by Christmas for the auditorium, gyms, and locker rooms, cafeteria, and those career active building services. I know there have been some concerns in the community regarding dust coming from the construction site. They have increased their dust control measures, including providing a water truck to wet down some of the dirt and earth to prevent that from blowing off. And then, we've also revised some of the construction routing from Shelburne Avenue to Stevenson Avenue on the east side of the site, and got a report that that seems to be working well. And then the contractors are really enforcing the contractor parking. They set an agreement with the church lot, and so they're trying to keep their workers off of the street and to use the lot. So far, so good, and I believe our target date is having the building done in the summer of 2019, so in the fall, we could have our dedication ceremony, have students in the building at that time.
I would also like to add that Hammond Construction has been great. They've been very conscientious of what's going on within the construction site. The staff, the students, the community has been great about, you know, changing our parking to over here now, so everyone's just been doing a great job working together, because the parking situation is not ideal, but everyone's been doing their part, so it's been fun. Okay, so we're projected to open the fall 2019. Right now, we're at the beginning planning for College of Herd Academies of Akron, so we're in that beginning stages of talking about the ELLIS academies. So right now, we're going to get a design team together for academies, so that would include student input, staff input, community input, to look at the kind of programs that we think would best service our students and our community here at ELLIS. We are also very excited to welcome the Navy ROTC to ELLIS in the fall of 2017, so that's just going to be wonderful. And we're also working with the architects in regards to spaces in the new buildings. Because we're going to have academies, we have to look at inside that design, where are we going to place those programs? And of course, having ROTC join us changes a little bit of our design, but we're very excited about that. So I just want to add a little bit of ELLIS on the move of some of the things that we've been doing this year. So of course, you know, we take great pride in our sports programs. We are very pro-sports, but we are also very pro the arts. Our NHS community spaghetti dinner is a hit everywhere, if you have an opportunity to do that in February, the kids do a great... Um, the kids do a great job. They're excited and they, uh, the staff come together, they cook. The kids waiter, they're waiters and waitresses, and they really get out. We also have Rachel back who's saving the entire time during the spaghetti dinner. So it's a wonderful time for our kids to reach out with our community members. We have the key club back in action this year. And the ladies on the right, my right, they actually, along with Mrs. Coleman, attended the state conference. And the, the key clubs on the left, and that was a part of Dier, or Havelheart, so they were part of that. So we're bringing key club back into Ellen High School. And of course, the drama club. Now, we have worked the last five years to bring the arts into our schools. They've always been here, but now we're really raising the bar. The production of Cinderella, we, I don't, I think we have like 80 students involved. And the morning before the opening, we have with the American, uh, we had some kids who stink math. And they're the best critics. If you want to know us something, go do ask little kids, because they will tell you. And they said it was great, and I came Friday night with my own kids, and it was just fantastic. When we talk about the arts and music programs, we're really building this here. We have about 76 students who requested going to choir next year. We've won period choir. That tells us something. We also have about 80 students who want to be in the band because we're sending our band director to hire to hold up that program and work with the higher middle school band teachers so that we can build our program. We're very serious about the arts as well as the sports at Ellen High School. And I'm of course giving back to the community. So each year, the marketing education program is led by John Malinowski, and he never leaves himself a head in the back, so we're going to put that out there. Donates on average about $10,000 to the Badger Learning Shelter, the Ellen community, and our own families through Thanksgiving dinners, adoptive families for Christmas, and really just clothing, providing clothing for our kids and for our kids in the cluster schools. So is our student council. Of course, we always do the Cancun drive, but it's very overwhelming. And actually, it's a great feeling to be a part of Ellen around that time because the amount the kids put into donating, not just the monetary amount, but the time they spend wrapping presents and, and working with those families so that kids have something and families have food, it, it's, it's, it's very humbling. I think that was my last line. So that was back to us in a snapshot. Thank you.
Thank you.
I always have anything more as far as the improvements that I requested on the table up here.
You mean on the track? Yes, they are doing that. In fact, I believe we have to be pit up there. So they are looking and there's discussion. We are, I'm a part of the athletic advisory committee, so we are discussing all the time about our facilities, our track and field facilities.
Okay, but they're still on the, they did dig out the mud and the dirt and sand like they were supposed to.
Yes.
It's required by the, uh, High School Athletic Association. And, uh, they still have a piece of tape across the runway, which makes us pretty much, and in a, I intend like three, two or three tractors a week. And here to have their parents talk who wish to relax and stop in the, in the area as far as that goes. Bring up this tape across the, unless they've done it this week.
Well, you know, I can certainly ask Mr. Bassalotti about that because clearly we're not a relaxing stock of areas, but I would definitely ask Mr. Bassalotti about that.
No, 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 I have respect for him. That's something that I like, if you would, he's done a great job. I mean, uh, working with his pleasure.
Thank you.
Very responsive every time I've ever called. And I just, it just, you can see that nowhere else.
Oh, oh, thank you. Thank you.
Two of the meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes, are April 24th, 27th, there? So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Eric Nambul, and I'm sorry, also the special meeting minutes for the joint DPS and City Council meeting from April 4th. So.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on either of those sets of minutes? Eric Nambul, call please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Odom?
Superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have a call for you for your consideration, 27 personal recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form when I move their approval.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the personal recommendations? Eric Nambul, call please.
Ms. Wall?
I am abstaining on item 25 and 26.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, abstaining from item 20.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, abstaining from item 21.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, abstaining from item 22.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, abstaining from item number 23.
Mr. Odom?
Yes, I'm staying.
Seeing a resolution, sir.
Well, it was a year, so I guess I'm seeing, I guess, they do.
Reverend Walker?
Yes, abstaining from item 24.
Um, before moving on to the next item, I would like to point out item 27, um, reporting the death of Stephen Cozy. He was an assistant custodian, uh, for Akron Public Schools and actually started working for us in 1974. And one item that did make our minutes, which will be in the next one, but because of her impact to our community, Deborah Mantic, uh, recently passed. She was the head of Project Rise, which, uh, I believe served over 1,800, uh, students who have issued homelessness, uh, in our district, and she'll certainly be in us.
Thank you.
Uh, next, Mr. President, I have a call for you for your consideration, one motion and six resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form when I move their approval.
So.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Eric Nambul, call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Odom? Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have a call for you for your consideration, 12 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form when I move their approval.
So, we have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any questions? Eric Nambul, call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Odom?
Staying.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Yes, Mr. President, um, just a reminder that on a week from tomorrow at our National Veterans Hall of Princeton Middle School, we will have our board next generation learning designation ceremony, which will, uh, I believe will be the first community in Akron to receive that designation. Um, also, uh, earlier today, I visited Jenny's Community Learning Center in North High School, where the city of Akron was entertaining, uh, the mayor and a delegation from Chemnitz German who had, uh, born in Akron. I think they're actually leaving early in the morning. Um, the gist of that conversation, they wanted to see, um, how we're dealing with, uh, a very diverse student population. Of course, uh, International Institute was there as well. And surprisingly, um, many of the issues that we have in terms of education here, um, you know, finding quality teachers in the pipeline and helping kids, uh, you know, on that career pipeline piece are things that they're actually dealing with in their country as well. I was really surprised because many people have used the model from Germany in terms of, uh, kids up to 16, um, taking more general classes. And then once they turn 16, they're going through that career track of going to the, uh, college track. So, um, there were some, uh, differences and some similarities in terms of their education system.
I mentioned in my items for the presidential report as part of community and school reflections. So treasurer's report?
No report, please.
And you, committee reports, legal contracts and board policy?
No.
Financi- no report.
Finance and capital management?
No report.
Instructional policy and student achievement?
We just wanted to highlight two items from our board agenda tonight. Um, one is that we approved the summer training of camps trainers. And camps is in, is the classroom behavior and improvement program that our district provides to all new faculty and offers to veteran teachers who want to continue to refine their practices. Uh, we have a team of faculty who are certified trainers for this national program. And tonight's board item will enable us to train additional trainers so we can continue to offer numerous sessions each year. And also, we wanted to remind board members that upgraded courses study for career education courses, um, will be available for you to view. And those are also in your board packets. We're not going to vote on those until, um, the May 22nd meeting, but those materials are available for you to review before that meeting.
Any questions for the instructional and student achievement? All right, Eric Nambul. Do we have any unfinished business?
Yes. I'd like to, uh, just explain the reason that I had missed the council, uh, joint meeting with the board and also the last two meetings, which I, I did make a contact with certain people to get that across. But I was in the hospital getting four disused. And, uh, I didn't want, uh, it to be conveyed in any way, shape, or form, but I just didn't come to convey them since. And I guess, there's a lot of ways you can put it up, but simply that, that, that's the way it was. And I was in the hospital, being operated on, and actually on a day of reading. And, uh, by the time I got out of hospital, I had complications and, uh, still not supposed to be doing what I'm doing, but, uh, I thought it was important to try to get back to the groove as soon as I could. I do want to say that, thank you.
Thank you. We did have a request to address the board. That request has been withdrawn. Uh, so with that, uh, we're looking, we have a few items to discuss in executive session. So I'm looking for a motion pursuant to Ohio revise code section 121.22G1 to discuss, to consider personnel matters of employee unemployment and discipline of a public employer official of the school district. Ohio revise code section 121.22G3 to consult with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and or the school district under the subject of pending, pending or imminent court action. And Ohio revise code section 121.22G4 to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. And revise code section 121.22G5 for the purposes of considering matters required to be kept confidential by federal law and regulations or state statutes. So I have a motion. Second. We have a motion and a second. Vocal, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo? Reverend Walker?
Yes.
And Ms. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.